United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, all. Dear Lord, thank you for this evening. Thank you for our friendship. Thank you for safe travels by commissioners. Please bestow your wisdom upon us and please allow us to meet with you in our mind, your thoughts in our heart, and your words crossing our lips. Amen.
Motion by Duckham, supported by Lightner. Any items for addition or removal? Seeing our hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried. We have no awards and recognition to come before the Board of Commissioners this evening. Communications and petitions. If you have any written petitions to present to the Board of Commissioners, please turn those into the clerk at this time. Seeing none, we have no special orders or public hearings. At this time is your first opportunity for public comment. Public comment guidelines are each individual will state their name, they have three minutes to address the board, they may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. First opportunity for public comment.
Peter Bormuth, I wanted to speak about the financing of the pension bonds, the idea the county and the commissioners are going to approve a bond of sixty-seven or seventy-five million dollars and that will be invested in the pension fund and that means it's invested in the stock market. And I'd like to point out that this is in some ways similar to someone borrowing money to go to the casino. I'm not sure that it's a good strategy at the current time. The post-World War II order, you know, seen America in a financial driver's seat. Basically, that was founded on our industrial production during the war and then afterwards, and also on our advantages and commitment to science. And both of those things have disappeared. We're no longer a manufacturing nation. Most of that is done outside of our country and we're no longer committed to science, particularly under new Education Secretary DeVos. The idea is to teach the myth of Jesus Christ in our schools and not science. And the Chinese meanwhile are investing heavily in science. They're investing in foreign aid similar to our Marshall Plan all through Central Asia and Africa. They just put out their first home-built aircraft carrier. They built a number of islands floating aircraft, stationary aircraft carriers, so to speak, in the Pacific, which will threaten our control of the Pacific, which is obviously a major trade route. There are all kinds of potential pitfalls that could occur in the stock market. I don't think the coming twenty-five years can be predicted by the past, say seventy-five years. So I'd like you to, you know, weigh those concerns when you take your vote today on what you're doing with the county's future. Thank you.
My name is Gail W. Mahoney. It's nice to see those of you that I do know. I am here tonight to talk to you about the Lifeways Board. As you know, I served on this board for twenty years and I served, I think, with distinction. I served on the Lifeways Board and was instrumental in bringing primary facts that would have impacted this county in a great way financially. I understand that the board is making a decision to have a second commissioner on the Lifeways Board, something that I asked for for a few years while I was there, and I understand that. But I also came tonight to remind you that I am still here and I am still very much interested in serving on the Lifeways Board. I do serve on one of the committees of the board for Lifeways and actually they're the ones that told me the position was going to come open and that I should apply. So just wanted you to know that I do still hold interest in serving on the Lifeways Board and I hope that you'll remember that in the future. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have no special meetings or standing committee meetings at this time. Approval of the minutes of the April eighteenth, twenty-seventeen meeting. We have a motion in support. Any questions to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried. Entertaining a motion for the consent agenda. We have a motion in support. Mr. Elwell?
Full items, eleven A and B.
They will become, standing committee reports, item fifteen A and B. Any other items for removal? Are you ready? We're ready to vote electronically? Yeah, for some reason it won't let me sign into the meeting. Just make sure it shows I'm here. We've arrived at Standing Committee Affairs and Agency appointments chaired by Commissioner Elwell. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, we have appointments. The first is to the Lifeways Board. We have Denise Morgan as a current member and the two applicants were Daniel Mahoney and Commissioner Mahoney, and Daniel Mahoney was a recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor of Daniel Mahoney serving? Please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have Department on Aging Advisory Council, two seats that are vacant with no applicants and no recommendation from committee. We have the Retirement Board, which is one general pension member. We have no applicant. That's noted as a chair appointment. Next, we have the Community Action Agency, one commissioner appointment, Sarah Lightner's seat, and the applicant is Daniel Mahoney, as well as the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing our hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you. Lastly, we have the Sanitary Code Board of Appeals, public, and there are two primary seats and two alternate seats. There are no applicants and no recommendations from committee and obviously the Administrator's Office will continue to advertise all these spots till we fill them. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Carl Rice. Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Human Services has no business to come before the board tonight.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two items of business tonight. The first will be Item A. It's brought forward by Facilities and that would be the proposal to municipal lease vehicles to acquire them rather than purchase.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have support?
Support.
We have a motion in support. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked that this be pulled. I want to vote no on it. I wanted to explain why, which is really the same explanation as in committee. I do support getting the new vehicles, but I do not support borrowing money to do it. I think there are places that we could likely take the money from and I just think that makes more sense and should have been explored more. And I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Certainly. Is this, I'm sorry, I just wanted to, just a point for clarification. Is this the same leases that after the lease period is over, we have the option to purchase the vehicles for a dollar, correct? Okay.
Any further questions? Madam Clerk, would you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Second item of business tonight will be financing of pension bond.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have support?
Support.
We have a motion in support. Discussion. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked this one be pulled just simply so we could discuss it more. I actually do support doing it. I think the Pulitzer, where the reporter from the Exponent inquired earlier, probably the largest bonding thing we've ever done in the county. I think that's probably true. So it, I think merits having good public discussion on it and I think most commissioners know that I asked probably more questions than anybody else about it. And some of the questions I thought I had the answers to, others I didn't. But I just think it was worthy of us discussing every aspect of it we could. And I think it also merits saying that we're not the first municipality to do this. I think Oakland County is one that comes to mind that bonded and I think they're free of their pension obligation. Now we're close to it anyway. And it is in fact based on the investment return over the long term that the pension fund does, which is far above what the rate of borrowing is for the bonds. I also would express concern about the potential for the market to drop and lose value. That's a risk, but over the long term, especially if you look at our pension, we return a rate that is higher than what the bonds cost us. And it will be obviously hugely beneficial to have a flat amount to pay every year that we know versus the one that goes up and down. So I'll be voting yes on this, but I wanted to be able to talk about it for a minute. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I know why we're doing this and I know why the pension fund is lower than it should be because of eliminating the defined benefit program, which was the right thing to do, in my opinion, but it kind of bothers me that we're selling bonds, we're talking about borrowing money out of the delinquent revolving tax fund, we're leasing cars now instead of purchasing. I know the county's on good solid ground, but to me, that's kind of little warning signs that maybe we're living beyond our means. We didn't used to do business this way and the only thing I can do is compare it to a family situation where you come home, you cash your check and you meet all your bills and have some money left in your pocket. Things tighten up and now you start living off your credit card. Then you get a second mortgage on the house, if you will, and it seems to me like there's telltale signs of maybe a dangerous financial situation looming over the horizon. And again, I know why we did it, the pension like we did and I supported that. I guess this is just a general statement on the direction that I see the county heading. It bothers me to have to borrow and sell bonds and all and it just, it isn't what we have done over the past and maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, I agree with Commissioner Elwell and Commissioner Duckham. I suspect all his commissioners have some hesitation on the amount of money that we're bonding here, but we've also been told that certainly there's the, if this works out the way that we hope and it should, this is going to save us money over a long period of time. And it also not only will save us money, it gives us the opportunity to free up money for our general fund. One of the things that our administration and us commissioners are working on very diligently is to make sure that, or try to get our 2018 budget to a place where we may not have to look at cutting services. It's still a battle we have, not saying it's going to happen, but we're taking steps for the overall good of the services in Jackson County and again, this is one of the ways that potentially can help that.
Any other commissioner comments? Mr. Tompkins?
I agree with my fellow commissioners. I just have one question. I see all the positive aspects of this, but what happens if it doesn't work and it goes south? Where does that put us financially and in what straits are we in? We know what happens if it works, but what happens if it doesn't work?
Basically, the downside of it not working would mean the market crash. So if the market crashes, we have a legal obligation to our retirees to continue to pay their pensions. So we would have to pay our debt service as well as their pensions. That's the downside.
So let's walk through this. We have to make the pension payment and right now we're making six point four million dollars in pension payments and this is going to reduce us to five something? Or four?
It should be.
I remember correctly?
It depends on, there's a number of things. Depends on interest rates.
You have a million dollars you're not paying right now. You close the two funds. We voted to close the road funds and we voted to close County General. So County General is shrinking and the roads while they'll rise a little bit will eventually start shrinking also as people retire from the fund and then stop collecting the fund. So that means you've got about one point one million dollars that you're saving instead of paying. So effectively to get to bad, the market would have to do less than four point eight and we'd have to get over an additional payment of one point one million dollars. So that's what bad would be. Yep. Commissioner Elwell?
I think it's also worthy to note, if we didn't do this bond and the market crashed, what's going to happen, Mr. Administrator? We're going to owe, right, a larger amount yet on what we're already paying.
Any further questions? Post the vote? Passed unanimously. Commissioner Duckham?
That is all we have tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Board Commissioners has no unfinished business at this time. New business to come before the commissioners, Commissioner travel and conference expense increase. and travel expenses from three thousand dollars to six thousand five hundred dollars. The reason for the increase is that allows Commissioner Mahoney to attend on behalf of Jackson County, the NACO Conference in Columbus, Ohio, and the MAC Conference this fall in Looking for someone to make the motion? We have a motion in support? As Board Chairman, I would like a caveat from the administration to review a policy of an eighty-five percent rule of attendance at the meetings and a return of information and just as a side note, not as something to be attached to this in any way, but look at our board policy on attendance at meetings. And that was at the behest of other commissioners, including Commissioner Mahoney. So we have a motion in support. Commissioner Duckham?
Yeah, I can support an increase, but over a hundred percent increase seems a bit much.
Okay. Certainly, Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment on the reason why it's more than a hundred percent increase is because instead of coming back to the board twice, the NACO Conference is coming up at the end of July and instead of having to come back before the board again for a second time to be able to get an approval for the expenses for the MAC Conference in September. After speaking with Mike and Delane in the office about it, we just decided it would be better just to ask for it all at once instead of coming back before the board two times.
I did. I just wanted to comment, I talked to Daniel before the meeting started. My concern would be that commissioners that go to these conferences attend the seminars within them and that's where the Chair mentioned the eighty-five percent rule. It's eighty-five percent of the seminars that they hold within or the training seminars they hold within most conferences like MAPERS and if we don't make that, then you have to pay the difference. Daniel assures me that he does make eighty-five percent of them in the past and he will in the future, so it's a reason I'm okay with it.
Commissioner Lightner?
Well, obviously, if we went on to the agenda, you're going to see mine's next for the very same reasons. And I can tell you, I'm in the same boat as Daniel. Currently, I serve on the NACO Committee, but we can talk about me later. But anyways, I can attest to the attendance as well because I have no problems with that myself and actually because of my position with MAC, now I go with the Governmental Affairs person. So there's other people within your conference too that can attest to seminars and stuff like that for attendance as well.
Any further commissioner comments? Commissioner Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I just drove back from Dearborn, was at a conference. Anyway, and my comment is this, that, you know, commissioners have relatively a small expense account that's given to them to attend conferences for the good of Jackson County and its residents, as well as the rest of commissioners and some commissioners don't have the opportunity to go to the conferences because of various obligations, work, et cetera. So when you do have commissioners that do have the opportunity, that actually attend and learn, it just benefits everybody and, you know, the fact is, if you added up everything that nine county commissioners get per year to go to conferences, even by extending the amount for Commissioner Mahoney and eventually Commissioner Lightner, we still won't come close annually to meeting what we could spend, so we need to keep that in mind too.
The motion is to increase twenty-seven conference and travel expenses for Commissioner Mahoney from three thousand to sixty-five hundred. Madam Clerk, would you post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The second item under new business is a motion requested for twenty-seven conference and travel expenses from three thousand to sixty-five hundred for Commissioner Lightner. Same explanation occurs underneath the administrative report. I'll entertain a motion? Have a motion? We have a motion in support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, could you post the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Things were done. We have no other new business coming before the board. It's opportunity for public comment. Again, the same rules apply, but you have two minutes at this time to address the board and there will be no debate, no questions asked or answered by the board at this time. Any public comment? Seeing none?
Mike, at the township meeting in Hanover, they were talking about the liberty and silver thing and so on. What's the latest on that?
Latest is that, let's see, next Monday, the twenty-second, will be, there'll be oral arguments in front of Judge Laflamme, if he so deems, but hopefully some decision is forthcoming.
Because I was told by Mike Smith that they wanted to put a meter, okay, on, I think it was the Liberty and Hanover, and measure how much was being used for the sole purpose of decreasing our rates, okay, and making it more equitable. And it just doesn't sound right because they want more money and they're telling us they want to put meters on at twenty-five thousand dollars apiece, okay, to monitor it so they can not charge us as much. I mean, it's like the wolf in the hen house.
I don't know what to, I didn't know what to tell them. Well, frankly, what you should tell them is sadly, that has no bearing on this S.R.R. case that we're involved in and that's really an issue between him case that we're involved in, and that's really an issue between him or that township and the other township, Leonie. We had no say in it, is what I'm telling you. All right, thank you.
Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Lightner?
Our 2017 Fair Book is out officially now, so you can check out the acts that are on here that have been announced. We actually did a last-minute show, added a fourth show, music show, that we are going to be announcing at the end of this month. We announced yesterday a hard rock show. We're going to have Stone Sour, Skillet, and Alter Bridge, so we're pretty excited about that. So we have the Tenderloins on Sunday, Flo Rida on Monday, and then a hard rock show on Tuesday. And then we're going to have another show on Wednesday that we're going to announce soon. So other than that, you can get your Fair Books at the Fair Office. It has your forms in it for projects that you might want to do. Those forms are due sometime in June.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, I'd like to commend Commissioner Lightner and Commissioner Mahoney for going to the conferences. I think they are a valuable tool. And objecting to the increase in expenses, travel expenses, I just wanted to make a statement. I think we need to keep our eye on the ball. Seems like the money's getting tighter and tighter, and I think we need to be very cautious in how we spend our money. No reflection against them. I appreciate them going to the Commission, to the conferences and bringing back knowledge that we may or may not have learned, but no way in reflective of how I feel about them as Commissioners. I think they do a great job. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mahoney?
Just wanted to thank the Board of Commissioners for the support to the two boards tonight. Thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Hearing none, seeing none. We have no closed session this evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.